Recording in progress.
Not on there yet. So when we get to Keith's largest thing, you and me need to abstain.
Call this city council meeting to order for September fifteenth. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, public comment. If anybody would like to approach the council and comment on anything that is not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to do so. Just want to state your name and address.
Minnesota Street. I just kind of want to go back on memory lane a little bit about Minnesota Street upgrades and the overlay. I believe the council had made a comment that the road would be busted up after Roundabout was completed. And I haven't seen any evidence of that, obviously. And then, and why are we, why are we prepaying for something that hasn't been completed? Maybe an answer for that. And I had mentioned that the road should last twenty years, and I think the comment was made. It would probably last thirty years. So I just want some of that documented in the minutes of the meeting, for sure. And maybe somebody can answer some of these questions. But I haven't seen any evidence of the road being busted up at all from construction. But that was made a comment here. I've been to the meetings, so I got a pretty good memory, but that's my concern. I mean, I know the show is going to go on. I know we got a deadline to pay by the seventeenth, but I haven't seen any work done either. So maybe somebody can answer, why are we prepaying for something that's not done?
So Tim, you're alluding to a portion of Minnesota Street that's east of the Roundabout that's already been done?
Third down to the new Roundabout. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Bryce, do you recall if we have street improvements slated for later this fall that are still yet to be done?
I, I, I think what you're referencing, Tim, is initially, we didn't know when that Roundabout was going to be done, or it was, it was such a tight squeeze on the Minnesota Two Roundabout that we weren't, we, we did not think we would have an adequate time to complete the improvements to Minnesota Street until next year. So we had, we had Minnesota Street West as part of this year's project, but the paving wouldn't be done until next year. Now that that project has gotten done ahead of schedule, we likely will, will have that work completed this year. We're waiting to confirm that with the contractors as they get into their, their schedule. They'll, they'll obviously finish all of the other work first and make sure they can finish that per the contract.
I think they had a deadline of the twenty-eighth to complete that Roundabout.
Okay.
That would have been last, last month, reference.
Sure. Yep.
So I think the concern, I, I don't have a lot of backup for all this. I know there'll be interest after the seventeenth. I just, it's hard to understand when you're paying for something that's not complete or even started that way. And they made a comment, like I said, about the road being busted up. It's probably as best it is right now. I don't know. We can't go backwards and say, well, we're not going to do this now because that's the past. But they're going to cut it down an inch and a half, and hopefully it does last twenty years. I'm optimistic that it will.
Yeah, and to clarify, so on, on, on West Minnesota Street, we're performing an overlay, so we're not reconstructing that street.
I know, I understand that.
Yeah, I, I, I think you're a little confused on why we're doing the overlay.
Well.
Uh, we're not doing it because of the construction of the Roundabout.
Yeah, that's.
We, we decided to wait with the overlay until that construction was done with, so that it doesn't get pounded on with the heavy trucks.
Yeah, but it didn't get pounded on.
Okay, so.
It wasn't, that was, no, there's no damage there. I think some of the other part of Minnesota Streets probably maybe not as good as what we have now. But I tried to call Bryce today. I wanted, I just wanted him to take a look at it. It's not that I don't think the show is going to go on and they're going to do the overlay. I'm not saying that because I'm not going backwards. But I'm just trying to understand a little bit better, just from the other meetings that I attended. So hopefully, you know, we can document some of this.
Understood. And I apologize for not getting back to you here, but we.
I'm not here to be radical or anything. You know, it's all the past. So that's it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Would anybody else want to address the council? If not, we'll close the public comment period. Moving on to item number three, approval of the agenda.
I move to approve.
Second.
Seeing a motion as second, any further comments? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, consent agenda.
I move to approve, and I'd like to have pulled for further discussion, item E, L, and M.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda and pulling items E, L, and M, signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Going back to item number four, E, from the consent agenda, promotion of Officer Vic Weiss from part-time to full-time. You have a question?
Yeah, I just like, it could be a conversation with the chief with respect, just the background on E and L, the new officer hire. This isn't pushing back, saying we're not going to do it or shouldn't do it, but hiring officers is a big deal. You worked really hard on it. So I think it should be good for the public record for you to give us our thought process and the public's thought process as to why we're doing these two things. And I want to hear more about the new hire as far as what your expectations are for that person.
So if you recall, this spring, Officer Vossen left for St. Cloud Police Department, kind of looking for a bigger department, bigger pond to swim in. So that created a vacancy, so we brought that to the council to accept his resignation and to fill his spot. We started off by opening up applications and basically got a goose egg for several rounds. Caleb put it out several times, and we just didn't get any interest. And basically, some of it was timing because just about everybody that was in skills at the time had job offers and everything else. And a lot of it, just the, the pool was picked over. So to entice somebody to apply, I came back to the council, looking at the, what most kids nowadays, when I, when I was getting hired years ago, I went to the paper every single Sunday and got the Star Tribune, St. Cloud Times, something in hard print because the internet wasn't around at that time, long time ago. Nowadays, the first thing kids do is they grab their smartphone, they look and they log into the Minnesota Post Line. There's currently, I didn't look today, but in the past, when we've been hiring, there's been a hundred and thirty-eight openings statewide for jobs in Minnesota. And some of those are Minneapolis that are looking for two, three hundred officers. Some places are looking for twenty, thirty officers. Some places are looking for five officers. But if you added them up, the state's probably looking for anywhere's around five, six hundred officers. And the pool in some of these schools is seventy-five to a hundred. So there's just no possibility to fill those. So looking at some of these job postings that were out there, I kind of started taking what some other cities are doing to entice people and came back to the council and said, if we were going to offer a sign-on bonus, here would be my recommendations based on others. And we had set it up that if an officer comes in with two-plus years of experience, that we would offer the person a twenty-five-hundred-dollar bonus to complete probation, which in our city is a six-month probation if they have a year or more of experience. If they have less than a year, they have a one-year probation. And that would give us a chance to kind of shake them out and see once if they're worth continuing on for. Obviously, they got a first-pass background and psychologicals. They got a back, uh, pass a FTO process. But assuming they make it out of all of those hoops along the way, once they finally get done with their FTO process and they have this probationary period, that would give us our first look. But that's just enough to entice somebody with experience to come here. And Vic hits those qualifications. And then, in the case of L, our, our new person, this person's coming fresh to us, green as can be. And, you know, each one of them comes with its own set of challenges. Not so much in the case of Vic. Sometimes you, you run the risk of old habits are hard to break. Vic is one of those that comes along with a very good team atmosphere and a team player. So, I mean, he's been a great addition here. He's got a good work ethic. And then with Jacob, you know, he's just excited. He's a brand-new dad of six months, and he's excited. He actually had a callback from the city of Becker, and he says, "I have an apartment in St. Joe, and I like St. Joe better, so thank you." And so then he decided to stay with us. So he actually turned down another city to stay with us. So I'm hoping, you always hope when you hire new people, they're going to go to a retirement age and not jump off. But I also have to respect those officers that want to further their career because we can't give them everything they can in other cities. So, so that's kind of how we got to where they both are. We did sift through other applicants that were in there, and the hiring panel was both sergeants, Matt Johnson, our deputy chief, and myself. We sat in on them, and we selected these two to be our, to fill our two gaps. So obviously, we have two current openings with the resignation of Officer Vossen and Officer Horner. And then with the looking ahead towards the future of possibly the 2026 officer, that's what I alluded to at our work session, that we do have another one that came available that really has got a promising future as well. So we're just going to take it one step at a time. Do you want to address M as well, or do you want to wait to get just these two first right now?
No, thank you for that, for the background. As far as, I don't know if any other counselors want to make comments or opine. As far as M on Axon, Lori, I looked at that. It just sounds like we're like a major league baseball team giving an extension to a good pitcher for a couple of years, right? I mean, this is already baked in till 2027, and now we're going out to 2030?
For cost savings, and actually, it's, we'll save more money by, by extending it. I know the police department, they've worked with a couple different companies on this, and Axon has by far exceeded what they hope to get out of the devices, the, the interaction that they can get from the squad cameras, from their body cameras, to the, um.
So the way, yeah. And the way.
Axon's the best.
They really are. And, and the hard part about it is you're paying, it's not so much a name, but it's what they've put into it. So with Axon, they base it on what's called a five-year contract. And halfway through that contract, they do what's called a TAP program, where they refresh all of our equipment. So halfway through the program, we get brand-new body cameras, part of this whole package because battery life isn't there for a ten-hour shift. They get bumped around, they're in and out of climates and everything else. So to make sure they're optimal, two and a half years into it, they refresh all of our equipment, the same thing with our in-squad cameras. So back in like 2022 or 23, I guess, whatever would be the five years prior to whenever we signed the contracts, we were committed to 2027. And we came from using what's called Motorola's WatchGuard system, which was not a superior product by any means. And there's a lot of agencies around us, and I'll throw Sock Center out there. They completely went all WatchGuard, found out that they were not getting the support. They've boxed them all back up again, and now they're going to Axon. And Melrose did the same thing, and now Melrose said they were too far committed, and their council would hang them if they decided to switch it out. So they're just going to ride it out for as long as they can. In this particular case, what Axon's saying is because we prepaid all the way through to 2027, and granted, we wouldn't have a bill due, but in 2027, we're not jumping off the Axon thing. It's highly unlikely that there's going to be a better product that comes out. They're looking for us to extend it a little bit farther, so they were going to give us credits back for what we've prepaid and do a new contract out, thus capturing 2025 prices rather than wait until 2027 and starting at that rate. So that's what they showed Lori. They first showed it to me in a Zoom meeting, and I said, "This is over my budgetary mindset, but it sure sounds good, and I just want to get somebody else's opinion on it." So we did a second Zoom meeting with Lori involved, showed her, and she came up with the same thing, that if you can buy into it at 2025 prices and extend it out to 2030, then we're, you know, saving money, obviously.
So Lori, it's not like it's costing us any more money in 2026. We're just extending a contract.
Correct. So, and we won't pay for that extension for a couple of years that we start making. And we'll do a, I think they scheduled it over a three-year period to pay it through 2030, but yeah, we don't pay anything for a couple of years, anything additional. And they did give us a nice discount and credits to get us to this pricing.
And ironically, 2030 is a great number because after 2030, then somebody else is going to figure out who we're going to go with after that. No coincidental thing there at all, so.
I move to approve item four, E, L, and M.
I second that. Any further discussion?
Welcome Officer Vic and Officer Jacob. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dwight and Laura. Moving on to item number five, fire department report. Keith and Joe.
My name is Keith Palagi. I'm the president of the Relief Association. And tonight, we're just here to request a raise for our pension from thirty-six hundred dollars per year service to forty-six hundred dollars per year service. In your packet that you guys all got for tonight, there was a, well, there was a packet in there that goes through all of our liabilities, assets, total funding that we have right now. And basically, I'm here to answer any questions you guys have and to ask for a vote for raising our pensions.
I don't have any questions at all, being on the fire department. And just to preface our conversations, when we put this to a vote, myself and Andrew Mooney, both being fighter fires, will be abstaining.
And I don't have any questions. I talked to Councilman Mooney and Mr. Bai about this, and it's not impacting our budget now. Basically, it's saying with the assets that Para has, there's enough to fund this at a hundred and four percent. If our country went into another 2008 Great Recession, something really bad, then we would have to make a commitment to hit this forty-six hundred dollar retirement benefit that we, that we have committed to. So I'm confident that my fellow councilpeople that can vote will vote for it.
Just a comment that I appreciate everything that all of you do for this city, and so I have absolutely no problems with this.
Thank you. Do we need a motion?
Yes, we do. Do you have any other comments, Adam?
No. I move to approve.
Second.
Seeing a motion as second, any other comments? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Onto item number six, conditional use permit, cannabis cultivation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. For your consideration, this evening is a conditional use permit request for indoor cannabis cultivation. Applicant is Daniel Clark, owner of Green Cross C Corp. Applicant is in attendance this evening. And then the owner of the building where Mr. Clark is proposing to lease out this space is Corey Ellert. Location of the parcel is right off of Elm Street, just south of the Wobegon Trailhead and the city's water tower. Approximately three thousand three hundred and twenty-two square feet of the building will be used for the cultivation facility. This property is zoned B2 highway commercial. Back in July, you'll recall that the council did approve the ordinance amendment to allow indoor greenhouses, including cannabis cultivation within this B2 highway district. Including your packet is a site layout of the interior of the building where the cultivation will occur. Again, this is entirely indoors. Nothing's going to be visible from the street or from the exterior. The applicant is not proposing to do any exterior signage or improvements on the building. And then parking is all going to be met on-site. The property has approximately three spaces right in the front of the building that will be utilized, and the applicant doesn't foresee needing more than one or two spaces. Planning commission and staff recommended some conditions that are included in your resolution this evening. Some template language regarding permit requirements, city reserving the right to conduct inspections. Odors, all the odors should be controlled to not create any nuisances, no exterior storage of materials, and any waste that is created needs to be contained in receptacles with closed lids. There is an area on the site that has the trash receptacles that's enclosed with a gate, so that gate just needs to be locked or kept shut at all times. And then we also have some template language, too, in regards to just revocation and expiration of the conditional use permit. If they are not to proceed forward, or if they do not proceed forward within a year, then the CUP does expire, and they'd have to come back. And then also, one of the conditions that the planning commission recommended was if the use expands to more than twenty-five percent for what is proposed this evening, they do have to seek a amendment to the conditional use permit. The twenty-five percent is kind of consistent with what we've done in the past, and that is, allows the planning commission to kind of look at other site elements that may be impacted due to that increase, particularly parking. If Mr. Clark does expand his business and employs more people, then we'll want to make sure that parking is still adequate on-site or is being addressed. And then also, security cameras on exterior of the building. Council has the right to also add conditions, access points, screening landscaping, limiting number location of signs or exterior lighting, designating operating hours and noise levels, or any other condition that the council deems necessary to protect the public interest. So last Monday, PC conducted a public hearing. The only person that spoke at that hearing was the applicant. To date, staff has not received any written comments or phone calls in regards to the proposal. As such, the planning commission recommended approval five-two-zero with comments on two conditions that are included in the resolution this evening. With that, the ask of the council is action on resolution 2025 dash zero six one. Council can also recommend any other additional conditions on that resolution. That would conclude my presentation. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And like I said, the applicant is in attendance this evening, so.
Daniel, would you mind coming up so we can ask you questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any questions?
Well, I fully intend to support this as is. Can you give us some background again? I know you were with us maybe once before.
Sure.
Or I went to planning. And it doesn't have to be a long spiel, but your background.
Sure.
And where do you plan to sell what you grow in St. Joe?
Yeah, so I'll start from the beginning. VC-backed entrepreneur through Techstars Tennessee Industries of the Future. That's for something separate. We structure glass at room temperature to make micro-structured 3D solar cells that are better than Chinese solar manufacturing. In the past, in California, I ran a delivery service for about nine years through the medical marijuana industry, so I'm a seasoned veteran in the industry. And in regards to, oh, we have an agreement with Enrel, the National Solar Lab, to develop our solar. But in regards to the topic at hand, the cannabis, we would love to give St. Joseph the best product available in this state, which will be from us. But that's your choice. I don't want to push too hard. We would even, if we found a location for retail, we would be open to considering that, too. But we don't want to dim your light. If you guys can sell our product here and make a whole bunch of money, there's plenty of other places for us to open our retail store.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not pitching you to have you sell us your product. That's not going to be determined by us. I guess my question is, have you grown marijuana before?
Correct, for quite a long time.
And we don't even have our license yet. Where do you anticipate selling your product? I'm just curious. Where are your trucks going to go?
Sure. They're mainly going to go to like uptown, the Minneapolis metropolitan area. And it would be pretty rare, like products harvest. We would set up a map with all the people that want the product. So maybe once every two weeks, once a month, the truck with the product leaves, and it's distributed to those places. So very minimal traffic in and out.
And all the growing is indoors?
Correct. It's done in a sealed room. So we bring air in, but air is not exhausted out.
Then why, when I drive down to Red Wing to see my son, and I go past the casino, and there's a native growing operation, there's a lot of it that's outside?
So that's outdoor cannabis, but there's a lot of issues with that, and the quality is not up to par. And so the stuff they're going to be selling, Minnesota has really strict rules with the fungus in the east and bacteria. So honestly, I think a lot of the product outside is going to fail their testing.
They might have some inside, too, but I just saw a lot of it growing outside. How many people do you plan to employ?
So right now, it's just going to be me and my investor. But eventually, as it expands and we expand the space and come back for another permit to do that, we're happy to hire people in the city of St. Joseph. But right now, it's just minimal, just being.
And if, and when you get approval tonight, when do you think you'll be opening? What's your, I mean, what do you think? What's your gut tell you?
The horror stories from my consultant. My hope is December, but like, they're just, the state is very strict. And if they want to knock you on one little thing, it takes sixty days. They have a kind of a little game they play.
You have a lot more hoops to jump through the state than you do with us.
Correct, but we're in a good position with the CUP because once we send in the next ten days our final application, the first thing they're going to do is contact St. Joseph, and if St. Joseph is quick to respond, and you guys say, hey, they have a CUP already, that speeds up the process.
Okay.
And I would think that they want to get people that actually can have the product because they're doing it backwards. They're giving permits to the retail stores, and there's not even a testing place that has a license. So why would you give out permits to the stores because they can't even sell it? Because you have to have the laboratory to be able to test it, and you have to have product. And so that's probably why there's been a delay with your guys' retail and other retail licenses. Maybe they're figuring out that maybe we should get the people that know what they're doing, that can cultivate the product to the market first, so they, they can sell it.
Just to clarify, so everything that the planning commission, that's already included, or do we have to add that in?
No, that's already included.
Perfect.
Yep.
I don't have any other questions. I just have the quip that if you can point a good word at the OCM, for us, we'd appreciate it.
I was telling Nate about, there's an article three-six-seven, so my bank, it didn't go through when I made the payment. And so they took sixty days for me to make the payment again, so they gave everybody the license, and there's an article I cited. And then finally, they're like, okay, we're going to, we'll tell you in two weeks. But he was saying that like, it might be worse if you cite that article. They might just make your life harder, too. It's basically an article that says that they have to do this in a timely manner. And if they don't, they need to hire outside people. So I've seen in the past with other states, they could take like a year to get the license, and then they just bankrupt people. So.
So you're not utilizing this whole building for your growth?
No, but it, I mean, as, I imagine as things expand, we could. It's like seven, eight thousand square feet, and there's quite a lot of power there. It's a three-phase power system, so it's enough. Right now, we have about fifty thousand watts LED lights that we're using. That can be expanded to about two hundred thousand watts.
So yeah, that section that's highlighted in kind of purple, it's kind of hard to see a little bit. That's the area of the building that he would be occupying.
Correct.
And you're just leasing that amount, or are you leasing the whole building?
We're just leasing that section.
Got it, okay.
Corey's been very helpful, very, very good guy. We're happy that his brother can do construction. They've been helping a lot, so.
Well, I think that's all the questions we have. Thank you, Daniel.
You're welcome.
With that, I'll move to approve resolution 2025 dash zero six one as presented.
Second.
Seeing a motion as second, any further comment?
I thought it was zero six two. Did I, was it zero six one?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, my note had something, oh, that was some different thing. Second? Aye?
We already have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Daniel. Finding my place here.
Before you leave, if you feel compelled to give me a tour, greatly appreciate that. And if it's like a slow or a busy day and you need help, I'm also. I, I, I think I would enjoy that. So, thank you.
Moving on to item number seven, issuance of general obligation bonds.
Good evening. We have Tammy Umdell from Northland Securities that will be presenting our debt issue that went for sale today. So I'll kind of go over it. I did put on your desk there that, the summary of the bond issue that Tammy will be going through. And then I also put a PowerPoint for the debt management study, which is the next item on the agenda that Tammy will also go through. So I'll turn it over to Tammy.
Mayor, council, good evening. Tammy Umdell with Northland Securities here to present on these two items. And if I understand the order, the bond sale is first. This morning. Um, this morning, um, the series twenty-two-five A of St., um, City of St. Joseph was priced. These bonds are being sold to finance the street, the twenty-two-five um street improvements and um equipment acquisition. Before the sale, um, the city did go through the process of seeking a rating on these bonds and that rating of double A minus was affirmed. When I get to the debt study in the PowerPoint, I'll talk more about that. With respect to the final pricing, um, the final um power amount at two million, one forty-five, and the final true interest cost, true interest cost is used to evaluate the pricing on the bond because that takes into account the purchase price for the bond. So three point two-nine percent, these are structured over ten-year term. With that, um, Mayor Council, there is a resolution related to the award of the sale for the bonds. After your consideration of that, then I will go through the PowerPoint, which is a more comprehensive review of the city's debt study. And I'm gonna step away from the podium to grab my glasses. They're on my head. Thank you. Thank you. No, they are. Thank you. With that, um, no further comments other than your consideration of the resolution. Um, unless, Mayor, you want me to do the PowerPoint first. I defer to you.
No, you can go ahead. No further comments.
Okay. Um, do you want to consider the resolution before I do the PowerPoint? Okay.
I've, I mean, can't we do that?
Yeah.
Just get this passed?
That's fine.
I've got a question then for you about this bond issue.
Okay.
So the coupon was five percent on these bonds, yes?
Correct, that is correct.
The investors that bought these paid, or five percent coupon is on the, the bond, but the true interest cost at three point two-nine means they paid a premium.
That is correct. So Northland was the underwriter, so Northland pays a premium. And on page three, I believe you have the bond sale summary before you, this document here.
Yeah, we do. We're looking at it. Yep.
So the re-offering premium, which was reused to reduce the principal amount because the city did not need that premium for other purposes. And I'm under issue summary. I am on the third line that says re-offering premium.
Yep.
Two hundred and thirteen thousand, three ninety-one, seven cents was the re-offering premium. And how bonds work and bonds for many years now, just given market conditions, are priced with premium. And the reason for that is the purchaser of that bond wants a higher coupon, so they pay more than the face value. But that starts first with the underwriter in purchasing the bonds from the city. So with respect to evaluating the cost to the city, it's that true interest cost which takes into account that purchase price and that premium. So while investors will earn a coupon of five percent, the city will pay less in principle than it otherwise would have.
So the premium, did we get all of it, or do we split it between Northland and you?
So Northland is the purchaser, so Northland is paying that premium.
Oh, you're buying them into your own inventory?
They were sold to investor today, but Northland is the underwriter, so the purchaser of the bond. So that purchase price comes from the underwriter, that premium from Northland. And then the investors who purchased it also purchased those bonds at a premium.
But that premium that you got comes back to lower our par value.
Correct.
Yeah.
That is correct. Now, that is all, um, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, just for a point of reference, a city, an issuer, has a choice on the use of that premium, and for St. Joe, you already knew what your costs, your projects were. Lori was planning on prepaid assessments, so it made financial sense in this case for the city to use that premium to reduce the principal.
And I don't imagine a resident asking us, but if a resident said, well, why did you issue bonds at five percent? We would say our true cost was three point something nine.
Correct.
That is absolutely correct.
Because we were able to sell our bonds at a premium because we're an awesome city with an A, double A minus credit rating. Which is like one of the best credit ratings you can get in the state for a city our size, in my opinion. So I move to approve that we did this bond sale that happened earlier today.
Second.
Twenty-two-five zero-six-three. I move to approve that.
Seeing a motion as second, any further comments or questions? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor Council, now I have um a fairly brief presentation, which I um do this time of year with the city. And this is considered a debt study, meaning it is looking at um existing debt. I would note for year twenty-two-five, because this was prepared before um today's sale, it was based upon estimates for series twenty-two-five. It's not a material difference, but I want to note that. I also want to start my comments that this debt study is not something that the city hires Northland for. The city, one of the reasons you have a double A minus is because you have very strong financial management. And your city already, in conjunction with Northland, goes through this debt study review, so we're sharing information and confirming and reviewing. So I would note that. So this isn't Northland coming in saying, here's your debt study. It's really working with your staff. With that, um, and I believe Lori, you're controlling it, I want to cover four areas. The purpose I just talked about, I'll touch on that again. The study approach, the outstanding obligations, and the source of revenue, those repayment, and as noted, I want to talk about the credit rating. So with respect to the purpose, city uses the issuance of debt as an important and essential tool for financing capital, including equipment. It's important to monitor the repayment of that debt. You do that on an annual basis as part of your budget and setting of debt service levies and utility revenues. This just takes a longer-term view of that, this study. The study approach, so again, we worked closely with Lori. Um, Lori maintains her records. We review based upon information to us and make sure that things are all in alignment, which I can report that they are. I have a few charts now on slide five. This is the um tax levy for debt service on a projected basis. The reason that, and this is for projected out, debt outstanding, including the existing and what was the estimate for the twenty-two-five, which you just awarded a few short moments ago. So for the existing debt, and this is planned, you can see that some planned increase of that debt service levy, whether those will be the exact amounts will depend on your annual budget and potential other sources of revenue. This is just a snapshot in time based upon those certified levies for the existing outstanding debt. With um slide six, this is showing the, what we call amortization. Amortization is just a word to mean the payment of principal. The city has rapid repayment of your principal, and I'll have a slide on that in a moment. But you can see in twen-, for fiscal year end twenty-two-five, just under twenty-five million. And the reason the chart goes like this is because this is showing the repayment of the existing debt. It does not layer in, this wasn't the purpose of the study, any new debt that would be on top of this. So this is just for existing debt. Slide seven is a pie chart, and you probably see something similar from Lori, maybe during the budget process. But this is just taking a snapshot and showing, like most cities in Minnesota, the majority of your debt is subject to tax levy. So the use of levying of taxes to repay. St. Joe, like some communities in the state, not all, has sales tax revenue. So a quarter of your outstanding debt is payable from sales tax revenue pursuant to the special legislation and the voter approval. And then you have debt outstanding payable from special assessments, a smaller portion, utility funds, and then a small slice being um from cash and other sources of revenue. If you can go to the next slide, Lori. This shows on a percentage basis, and speaking of that rating, which I'll touch on, rapid amortization. So between now and twenty-thirty-six, it's um not projected. It's based upon debt that's already issued. Ninety percent of that debt will be retired within that period, so very um favorable amortization of that debt. If you can go to the next slide. So the credit rating, so on September eighth, S and P did affirm the double A minus. Just under eighteen percent of the Minnesota cities that S and P rates um hold that double A minus. So the, the comment on, for city your size, that is an excellent rating, um speaks to, on, I'm gonna jump ahead here, Lori, if you can go to slide ten. Some key points that I just pulled from the rating um report. Stable population, these are um S and P global's word. Healthy financial profile, realistic budgetary practices. The elevated debt and liability profile stemming from city's capita and capital initiatives. I would note, even triple A sometimes score very low in this category. It means that you're issuing debt. And they look at that with respect to revenue. So this in and of itself is not a negative, it's just noting that. I would also point out that S and P, as part of the process, um Lori met with S and P, shared information. This accounts for some of the city's future plans for issuance of debt that you've been talking about in your meetings. So that is a favorable comment because they considered that when they affirmed your double A minus rating. Not to point out if those plans change or more debt, they look at this and each time you issue debts and debt and request that rating, but that's a favorable comment. And then the last important, well-funded pension plans, you just had a agenda item on here a short while ago. With that, I've come to the conclusion, there's a more detailed report that prints out all the tables, but in summary, this is the key points from that. With that, Mayor, Council, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Uh, Lori, have we ever had lower than double A minus since you've been here, or we've always been double A minus? Just curious.
I think we were A plus when I started.
Okay, thank you. Could we go back to page seven on the PowerPoint? So this is more for Lori. When we look at our total outstanding bonds, that includes the six million of bonds we sold for the community center.
It does, and that's the sales tax piece.
So the sales tax revenues, the regional sales tax revenue, that's going pretty much all towards those six million of interest and amortization.
Yes.
Okay. And then, could we go to page five? So this is just for general information to fellow council members and anyone in the public. This chart, Tammy, pretty much stays the same every year. Like if we never issued another bond or never issued another equipment certificate, that's what would happen. Everything would get retired. So next year, when we're here in twenty-twenty-six, we're just pushing it out there again. So it's not like our debt's going away, it's just our existing debt is being amortized.
Correct, correct.
So has there ever been a chart, Lori or Tammy, that shows, based on the average amount of debt we've issued in the last five or ten years? You'd put like another color up there to say, based on what you've done in the past, this is what it would look like in, you know where I'm going with this?
So modeling out.
Yeah, modeling out the way we've issued debt, because we're issuing debt every year for good reasons. And it would be good to have another chart that shows our current debt going down, but then we're gonna be layering on new debt based on the fact that this is what we've done in the past five or ten years. Is that something that's ever asked for or common or can be modeled?
Not for this study, for St. Joe, it hasn't been, just because it's always been existing debt. Is that something that can be modeled? Absolutely. That's more of a long-term finance plan.
Would that cost us more money to get that modeled?
Um, in what you're asking for, no.
Good.
That, so next year, I will make note that we will model in um plan new debt. And I will, I'm not making this decision for your finance director. I'm making note of that and we'll.
No, it'd be interesting to see that, because this is, this is a, I get that, but it doesn't really tell the true picture as to what it really is gonna look like in twenty-thirty-five, because we will, by then, have issued more debt.
That is correct. And Mayor Council, I would note, one of the things, and Lori can speak to this, when you look at slide five, which is up there, in that structuring of the new debt, so that you don't have, when you issue new debt, you're taking into account how quickly the existing debt is being paid off. And Lori did that this year to an extent, in that your levy um for these new bonds that you just approved.
Yeah.
We were managing to a total debt service levy that Lori was seeking, consistent with your budget plan. So I just note that where you see the bar going down in your plan new debt issuance, to the extent possible, given the amount of debt, instead of having it rise up, structuring those payments around the existing debt amortizing.
Yeah, I'm thinking more about like from twenty-thirty on out, those green bars are never gonna go away, because we're always gonna be issuing debt.
Um, you have plans to issue debt, um, whether that will be always, I will defer to the council.
We will always be issuing debt.
I will defer to the council on that.
I don't have anything else.
Any other questions for? I have none. Thank you, Tammy.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Mayor, if you could sign that contract for Tammy before she.
That's fine. Item number ten, department reports. Dwight, Lori, Nate.
Preliminary budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let you tackle that, Lori.
For the preliminary budget, I know we, we touched on it um earlier in the, the workshop. Um, I did not bring my paper in here. I left it on my desk. But um, kind of to recap what was in the budget, uh, we did get some updated, um. Yeah, that'll help. We did get updated numbers on our market values for the preliminary budget. And um, it, it worked in our favor, the market, the net tax capacity, the market value slightly is slightly more than what I had put in your council packets. And so it's looking at um, uh, overall levy in the urban properties, going from sixty-two point seven percent up to sixty-three point one percent, and I think it was closer to sixty-three point five percent in the council packet. Um, with that, we're looking at an overall levy change of ten point eight percent increase. Five percent of that is the debt levy. The rest is operational, looking at equipment that was scheduled in our five-year equipment plan. Uh, seventy-five percent of the city's budget is really staff and wages. We're looking at a additional police officer hire. Uh, right now, in the preliminary budget, it's set at, at a lateral, kind of a midly, um, mid-scale hire. Um, depending on who we hire, that could go down if it's um brand-new, right out of training. Um, we also put a buffer in there. We're um negotiating with both our, our bargaining units. And um, we don't know exactly where they'll settle yet, so we put a little bit of buffer in there on um wages and benefits for um for the staffing. And since that makes up seventy-five percent of the budget, you know, it has pretty, you know, a pretty big impact in the overall operations. What, something I forgot to mention in our workshop is the new law, the Minnesota Paid Leave Law. The city gets to participate as well, as, as well as um almost ninety-five, close to a hundred percent of the employers in Minnesota. Um, and so there is an additional cost that we're gonna incur with implementing that new law. So that is incorporated into the, the budget as well. Um, still undecided if we're gonna go to a private plan or going with the state's plan, but either way, we have it um budgeted at the worst-case scenario, basically, in the budget until we can negotiate with the bargaining units um on settling with that final contract there. We looked at also, the fire department is um looking at doing fire call service to the College of St. Benedict's. They had approached us. They are um running in some staffing issues for um internally being able to respond to some of those fire calls that they have. And so working with the fire chief, we came up with um an estimated call volume that we have with the, the um college and came up with a, a contract pricing level for them to cover those calls. And, and we will revisit that um annually in August to see if we're on target with the number of calls and what that dollar amount should be.
Can I ask a question about the fire department?
Certainly.
Did the fire department budget for new radios?
They did, um, so.
Is it in? Are the new radios in?
So, so yes, we have a, a five-year, they've been part of the five-year plan. So in our five-year capital plan, we, we put seed money aside every year, so hopefully we can make that purchase in the year needed. Uh, we don't have the total fund set aside on the radios, but the fire chief has been collecting donations. The fire relief is looking at um contributing some into that, and we applied for a federal grant that we're still waiting to hear on.
So we've just been allocating a certain amount into this fund for new radios?
Yes, so.
I thought in talking to Jeff that he would like to get those next year.
He is looking at it for next year because um.
You're confident you'll get them even with what we've done for our allocation?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
And when we do allocate tho-, that money in the fire department for the capital plan, the seed money we put aside each year, the town, both townships that we're servicing also contribute into that by your capital plan. So with that, if you have further questions, that's kind of sums up what's in the budget. With the preliminary budget, we also have to set the truth and taxation hearing in December. And December first is, we usually do the first meeting in December. In November, the property taxpayers will get their statement on what this preliminary levy looks like for them with their current market values of their homes, businesses. But, so we'll have those numbers for the truth and taxation hearing, but we can modify these. We can reduce this levy if, if we find, you know, we get into negotiations with the unions and we can bring those values down. Maybe it's the police hires more of a entry level instead of a lateral move that we can, you know, find some savings there. But today, we just don't know for, for a fact what those numbers should be, so we're trying to keep it at this level where we can reduce. We just can't increase at that final hearing, so. So the action tonight is also setting that public hearing and stating it, I don't have the, sorry, I don't have the pack in front of me, because I have it on my desk. But it has the verbiage that needs to be said, and then also adopting the preliminary levy.
I have the second part that I can read in a moment.
Thank you.
So we're looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six four.
So moved.
Second?
Seeing a motion as second, any further comment, questions for Lori? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And we'd also like to state, the public hearing for the final budget and levy will be held on December first, twenty twenty-five, at six P M in these St. Joseph City Council chambers. City taxpayers may call city offices at the phone number of three two zero, three six three, seven two zero one. With any questions regarding their property notice that they will be receiving imminently in November. Comments can also be sent to city offices at our address of seventy-five Calway Street East, St. Joseph, Minnesota, five six three seven four. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Now we're on item number ten, department reports.
I have something real quick, so an update on a project that had sat dormant for some time. Last week, City of St. Cloud began the process of annexation of the Justice Center. That opens up a ninety-day public comment period. And then after that ninety days, then they are tasked with acting on that annexation through approval. So just FYI, the City of St. Cloud does have their sketches for the, the Justice Center. Sketches are available on the City of St. Cloud website and everything. So if you want to see how that proposal is, just let me know, I can share that. So just an update on where that is at.
Lori, Dwight, anything else? Mayor and Council reports?
I just had a question, I'm, because I feel like I've been out for a while, is, do we have any updates on the community center? Does anybody?
I can make that, two announcements.
Okay.
So I'll start with the community center. So following the reception we had out at the Reese's home, we had a meeting, the fundraising committee, like a week after that. And it was evident to me, and I sent an email to the group with a copy to the mayor and John Rice and Greg Jake, that it's obvious we are not going to raise the amount of money we had hoped to raise in the quiet phase. It's not going to happen. So we're going to pivot to the public phase. Community awareness, get everybody on board, ask for the community to participate in raising as much money as we can. And at the same time, we're asking the architect, working with Jake, to formulate a phase one community center, which is going to look different than our original goal. And in that, yeah, in that, I'm stepping down from the fundraising part. So it's going to go on, it's going to go on great, but I've, and I said in the email, I was personally disappointed that some of our higher net worth business owners and residents never stepped up with any major pledges. The major pledges we had were from outside of St. Joe. So I'm done beating my head against the wall. And it's going to be great, we're going to take it out to the community, and the council is going to get updated, I would think before the end of the year, as to, sooner than that, as to what phase one will look like and what the budget for that will be. Did I express that accurately?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
No, thank you, I just wanted to, since we had that.
Yeah. The second thing I want to announce is on Thursday, two residents, Wenzman and Murphy and myself, we met for forty-five minutes here, and we have formed, well, it's not an ad hoc group, these people are going to move forward, what we're calling an Arbor Task Force. That's a group of residents that are interested in the health and maintenance of our trees. In the city parks and on public property. So our next meeting is a week from Thursday. We're going to put more meat on the bone as to how that's going to go forward. It's obvious that Ryan and his department's part of that, because they're going to implement what the committee comes up with, or the task force. And then we hope to recruit a couple more people, and then I'll step down, I don't need to be involved in it. But I was really excited to see Ryan buy in. Murphy said, we don't need any official council approval to have a citizen task force do this. And, and these, and these two guys, and I'm sure they're going to recruit some great people for it, so. I'm concerned about our trees, especially ash trees with the Emerald Ashbore Disease. And I'm hoping we get some treatment done before, before the end of this year, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I got one announcement for this Thursday, if anybody's looking for something to do. Big Brothers Big Sisters is going to be at Millstream Park, and they're having an event or carnival of sorts for children, teenagers, and they're looking to recruit more big brothers and big sisters for littles who are in need of them. I will be in a dunk tank, so if you want to drown me, come on by and pitch a bunch of softballs. Hopefully it's warm that day. But that's something that Big Brothers Big Sisters is putting on this Thursday from four to seven P M at Millstream Park. With that, I'm just looking for a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We adjourned.
So like that, right?